Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the December 20th, 2021 Crestille City Council meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Present.
John Boucher.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Giselle.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kuvall.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on December 6th, 2021. Motion would be in order?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Giselle for the approval of the minutes of the December 6th, 2021 city council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, but we do have several special guests in the audience tonight. So with council's concurrence, I would like to deviate to the committee reports, and I would like to turn this portion of the city council meeting over to Alderman Nate Albert in regards to the Christmas decorating contest winners.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I can hear him. I'll take this off for a minute so everybody can hear me. Even wore my festive tie. So, most of you know me, and I'm obsessed with Christmas lights and Christmas decorations myself. So I'm always happy to give out these awards each year. So I'm going to get right to it here. I want to congratulate and thank all of the entries this year. We had a total of 11 official entries into the contest this year, and I got to say that it was an impressive sight. It was a tough season. Anybody that decorated their home this year knows that these high winds that we were having was brutal, especially on inflatables and blow molds and stuff like that. But I did things a little bit differently this year. We had several judges that there was a clear, there was clearly people, judges, that liked the classy, traditional look. And then there were some judges that really liked the colorful and flashy type displays. So instead of doing places, we kind of have three finalists, we'll call them, and then we have two for a tie for first place. So I'm going to start with our, one of our finalists. They did a very classy-looking display with nativity scene and a homemade Merry Christmas box on their fence, which is, I know they've had for quite some time. Looks very, very impressive. And that is the Streisig family, Mike and Pam at 2301 Green Street. So if you get a chance to check out their display, I have a prize here for them. And that is a $50 Carnitas Don Rafa gift certificate. So if Pam and Mike are here and would like to accept this prize, the house looks really great. That's right in your backyard, too, so you don't have to go very far. The next one I'd like to hand out, this is a gentleman that's been decorating his house for quite some time. He has a lot of stuff in his yard, and I know the troubles sometimes with having a ranch home and how much you can cram in your front yard. But Mr. Kevin Schultz and his family does a fantastic job on LC Avenue, 532. Right, Kevin?
Yep.
He even has a special guest that comes out and visits him from time to time, Santa Claus. So I think Santa will be there tomorrow night, too. Right, Kevin?
Last night, yeah.
Yeah, all right, great. I have a $50 gift certificate for a Loucano's for you, Kevin. We spoke about inflatables and the troubles that we were having this year with the windstorm. A gentleman has decorated quite, quite nice on Root Street, 1804 Root Street. It's the Heinrich family. If you get a chance to go by his house, he's got toy soldiers and candles kind of protecting his yard. He's got Santa in the outhouse, which is my kid's favorite whenever we go by. And just a real nice-looking display. So we have a $50 gift certificate All right, now for kind of our grand prize winners. Like I said, there's one that's classy, there's one that's colorful. And they both did a tremendous job. You know, anybody that does this knows how much work it is, how early we have to start in the season, sometimes before Halloween to get these things up and ready before, before Christmas. But the Patric family on Spruce Lane, fantastic display. He's got arches going over his driveway, arches along the sidewalk, lights on his fence. He's also got the Grinch stealing some of the lights from the, from the road. So I have a $100 gift certificate here to Marishkas. I asked Marishkas if they had any to-go menus. No, they just hand you the regular one back. And then the last other first-place winner, we have the Lara family on Gray Wing Drive. Don't think they're able to make it this evening, but they have an awesome display. You can see it from Gaylord Road when you're going down Gaylord Road. He's, he's got some small frontage on Gray Wing, so he capitalizes by putting a lot of lights on the, on the side of the property. It looks, it looks fantastic. I have a $100 gift card here for Burger Rebellion for them, so. And every year, well, for the past several years, we've been giving out ornaments that kind of commemorate winning or being a finalist in the contest. So I'd like to present everybody with the ornament here. It says, "Happy Holidays, 2021 Decorating Contest Finalists." And on the backside, we have our new Presto logo on it. So I have one for each of you and then a few of the other entries that we received as well. I do want to just take a quick moment to recognize the other entries. And some of these have, have entered in the past, and the way the judging works out may have just fallen a little bit different with the votes, but we certainly appreciate, you know, all that they, all that they do. It's a lot of work, like I said. Just real quick, we had Karen, Karen Cable at 2516 Daisy Lane. She does a great job decorating her home with red and green lights. Zachary Hamm, he lives in a duplex on Carlton Street, 21435 Carlton. He's able to get his neighbor to decorate, and it all matches. So the duplex looks all, you know, all consistent. We has the, we had the, I might chop this last name, Larry and Kim Wajniak, 16609 Kings Brook Drive, also outlining the house in multicolored lights. One of the late entries we received is the Kerwin family at 2019 Water Tower Place. They did a great job with green and purple lights on the house. And, and an entry that we get quite often is Billy Ramsack. He does a fantastic job. He's on Inner Circle Drive. He's got a lot of blow molds, blow molds in his yard. He says he has some that are over 25 years old. So thanks, Billy, for brightening up the neighborhood. Then I mentioned all of our winners here tonight. So before you guys leave, oh, one more. Sorry, we have Dave and Lindsay Farias, too. They are at 2225 Hess Drive. Nice classy-looking display they have in their home. I'll have all these listed with the cable TV. I saw the five places there on, on the scroll. Thank you, Ron, for putting those together. And that's all I have. Just a few moments for you guys.
Okay, I certainly want to congratulate all of the winners and everybody that entered the contest. And to everybody, I mean, when you drive around the city of Crestille, you see a lot of homes that are decorated. We had some nice weather in the fall, so I think that helped. And, and I appreciate all your efforts with the wind that we had the past weekend. It had to be tough on a lot of the decorations. But you did beautify the city a lot over the Christmas season, not just you, but everybody that went out there and decorated. And there are some very nice, throughout the city, there are some very nice decorations, and everybody did a fantastic job. So to everybody within the city of Crestille that took some time out to decorate for Christmas, I certainly want to say thank you for all your hard work and for what you did for the city of Crestille. And I certainly want to wish all of you and everybody that's watching on television tonight a very blessed and a very merry Christmas, and more importantly, a very healthy, a very healthy and a happy New Year to everyone. So thank you very much. I will extend an offer to any of the winners that are here. If you'd like to address city council and say anything, you're certainly more than welcome to come up to the podium.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, enjoy. And to the, to the businesses, the restaurants that gave the donations, I'm sure there were some of, a part of it was a donation for the prizes also. So we certainly want to recognize all of them for what they did to help out with the contest also. So you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. If you want to go home and watch the Bears game, you certainly can. We, we will not be offended. How's that?
I made it a point to tell them that they'd be first on the agenda.
Okay. All right, everybody have a great Christmas. Okay, going back to the agenda, to our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have nothing on the agenda. Happy to answer any questions. I would also, though, like to echo the mayor's holiday wishes for Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and a great 2022.
Okay, any questions of city attorney?
Thank you for the chocolates.
You're welcome.
For the calories, I should say. No, thank you. Merry Christmas.
And to our management consultant, Steve Golden. Good evening, Steve.
Mayor and Council, how are you tonight? Go Bears, right? Before you is the local 150 collective bargaining agreement that we discussed at last workshop. Nothing has been changed. It's exactly the same as presented. So I'm asking for council's approval of the 150 CBA.
So moved, just presenting.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the local 150 collective bargaining agreement, which was discussed last week at our work session. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to thank everybody. Today's my last official meeting. Yeah, last official meeting. Jim Marino, our new city administrator, is right here. So I just want to thank the council. I really, I really enjoyed working with the council and the mayor. This has been a pleasure. I made a lot of friendships that will last a long time. And Crestille has a very bright future, and you guys are doing a really good job. I've worked very closely with a lot of staff, Mark, Jason O'Hear, Ed Clark, Ron, Lisa, Zo, the city center construction team, Mike Stiff, Crispasia, Mike Stanci, you know, listen to all this legal acumen, right? Really good team that you have here. It's, it's going to do nothing but get better, and, and really enjoyed working with all of the department heads. And again, I think we've made some lifelong friendships that we'll, we'll continue to have. You have a great team here and, and look forward to working with Crestille in the next several, several months. So thank you, guys, for all your help and support.
Well, I'm going to miss you, for one. I know you may be staying around in another capacity, but you certainly were a breath of fresh air, and you certainly had great ideas, and you were guiding the ship so well. I, I can't tell you how much I appreciated all your, your assistance and your input and your ear and everything about you. It was really, it was a joy. It was a joy to work with you, and I will miss you deeply. But you'll still be my friend.
It was great having our Saturday talks, right?
I know.
Yeah, it was great. And Maura, she was on my list here, but Maura, Maura's been awesome. Yeah, Maura's been actually awesome to work with. Anybody else?
Steve here.
Thanks.
I just want to thank you, Steve, for really stepping in and stepping up here. I mean, you were interim just for a short while, but you did a fantastic job. You really helped the city out a lot, gave us a lot of insight, really appreciate the dedication you had to our community. So I really want to thank you for all you did in helping us move forward.
Thank you. You guys have been awesome.
And Steve.
Thanks.
Steve, I'm not going to say goodbye because I'm not going to let you go anywhere. I'm glad that you're, you're sticking around.
Thank you.
Well, I told you I'm going to talk to your wife, so I'm going to ask you to talk at home. But you know how I feel.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for everything. You came in a very difficult time, and you moved us. You were like a speedy gazelle. You're amazing. You know that, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I appreciate everything.
There's our talks, too. We'll, we'll still talk, right?
We still talk, and I, I learned a lot of words from you, so.
Hopefully, you weren't, hopefully, you weren't four letters.
We're not going to say I'm on TV tonight. We're not saying I'm on TV tonight, but I think my family are very pleased that I changed my language a little bit. No, they're not. But thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, Steve, you know, I think you've stepped into a very tough situation, and your experience and expertise helped us, you know, get through some rough periods here that and got us in shape to move forward in a positive direction. I value you as a person and as a person I can talk to, and I'm like Nate, I'm not letting you go anywhere. So it's, it's been a pleasure, and, you know, I'm not going to say I'm going to miss you, but, you know, hey, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to just hope and pray that we continue the direction that you gave us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Change yourself one number.
Yeah, that's right.
Steve, thanks for everything you've done. Look forward to working with you a little bit here in the future. And thanks a lot for bringing a great city administrator, helping us find a great city administrator. We're excited to work with Jim, too, and I think this is going to be a great 2022.
You guys are being great hands with Jim. Jim and I were talking all day today, so you guys will be in great hands with Jim. Thank you.
Like anyone, like everyone else has said, Steve, it's just been a pleasure. Your experience and knowledge and expertise in so many fields, it's been really, I appreciate it being new to this council, to see, you just set really a high bar and set a great example for, for the position. And it's been great to, to work with you and, and know you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Now, you just got to switch seats there.
Yeah, that's right.
Give him the comfortable one.
So I'm not going, I'm not going to repeat all the gushy stuff, but I will say this, that I was very grateful when I gave a phone call to you six months ago that you said yes. And you were the right fit for the city of Crestille for the last six months. You brought a lot of knowledge to this, to this table and to this city. And for that, I want to thank you very much. So like I said, I'm not going to get into the gushy stuff, but I will say this, that I valued your friendship at your former employment, and I value your friendship more now that I got the opportunity to work with you for the last six months. So outside of you being a Cub fan, that's the only regret I have. But I will say this, that again, I, you know, you are going to stick around for a little bit. We're going to get into that at the next work session in January. But, you know, just thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
And I certainly want to take this opportunity to welcome Jim Marino here. And I know you're going to be around with Jim for some time this week also. And just for the transition to make it nice and smooth, I think Jim's going to bring some great things to this table. He's going to bring some great, great improvements to the city of Crestille also. And I think that we found the right gentleman to succeed in that capacity also. So thank you and welcome to you, Jim, also.
Mayor, thank you for your friendship as well. Thank you.
You are very welcome. Okay, Public Works Department. I would turn it over to our director of Public Works, Mr. Mark Seaver.
Good evening. Follow that up, but this evening I have no agenda items today, but I do want to thank all the residents who came out on Saturday and attended the Christmas parade. It was awesome to see the smiling faces on the children as they drove by. The ones that were jumping up and down when they saw Santa was incredible. And then the last thing is, I do want to remind residents to, Wednesday is the last day that we will be picking up any debris from the storm. We put the message on Facebook and got it out there. Anybody who has any branches down, all they need to do is call Public Works at 815-741-5108 and arrange for us to come pick up any branches that they bring to the parkway. We will chip branches of any size. With that, just want to wish council a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Are you picking up dead inflatables?
We have three of them that bit the dust.
Those would not be good for the chipper.
All right, any questions to Public Works?
No, Mark, can you announce the website about the water one more time?
Yes, for any resident who's looking for more information on the potential switch to Lake Michigan water, the website is www.cityofcrestill.com/futurewater. Once again,
Thank you.
Yeah, Mark, out there by the treatment plant on Gaylord Road. Let's see if we go out there and cut some of those trees down and trim those dead trees along Theodore Street over there by that plant. I mean, there's a lot of dead trees, tall grass in there. At one time, we used to be able to see that little stream going through there. Now we can't even see it. There's a lot of dead trees there. It looks terrible.
All right, we can send somebody over there. It is, it is a forest preserve creek, but we can see what we can do on the banks.
At one time, we used to have a guy coming to grade all and dig the dam the beaver put across.
That's where we had that going on right now.
And they dig it today and tomorrow it was already built again. The guys, the guys are good.
Yes, they are. They're very accomplished carpenters.
Yeah, they're fast, too.
They're eager.
But it does look kind of bad out there with all the dead trees out there.
We'll take care of them.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Moving on, our city engineer, Ron Weideman.
Good evening, Ron. I don't have it on the agenda either, but I did want to do a quick update on some of the projects and some things you're going to be seeing in the coming months, January, February. The MFT resurfacing projects that we've had going on from last year, Arbor Lane, Marlboro, Rockhorn Drive, and Bicentennial. Last summer, we got all the concrete work done. Right now, the final plans are with IDOT. We're looking at bidding that out in January. So you should see a bid award sometime in February with work starting in spring on those streets. The rebuild Illini projects of Rayner, Bryan Drive, the alley, east-west alley at Fern, Grandview and Fern Street from US 30 to Greengold. We're anticipating a target letting for that project in March of this year with award in April and construction probably starting sometime midsummer on those projects. In Janu-, I'm sorry, in January, we'll be advertising for the American Rescue Fund projects of Cheney and Center with an award in February. Design will happen in 2022 with construction anticipated for one or both of those streets, depending on the final cost estimates, in the following year. And then the last project I wanted to just bring up to date on is Weber and Knapp. I received the actual agreement from the county today executed. We are currently going out for RFQs for design for that project, and I'm on the selection committee for that consultant. And that should happen in January or February. So that design should start happening in 2022, again, with estimated construction in 2023. So if there's any questions on those projects or any other ones, I'm happy to answer that. Also, you know, everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday.
Okay, any questions of city engineer? Thank you, Ron. Moving on, Community Development Department, you do have the reports in your packet from Community Development. Police Department, our deputy chief, Jason O'Biola, is with us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. In the packet, you have a police activity report. We have nothing on the agenda. We want to remind everybody that we have been getting IDOT traffic grant, safety grants. We will be out enforcing that again over this holiday season, just like we did in Thanksgiving in October. We've seen our press releases reminding the public of that. We'll continue to do that throughout the year. There's this feedback from the public that they wanted to see some more traffic enforcement. This is, we thought was a great way, partner with IDOT to pay for some of the overtime for the officers at no additional cost to the city. So we will be out enforcing that over the next couple of weeks. The only thing Chief Clark wanted to remind you that he's still working with our attorneys and attorneys of the Blue Line Professional Group, and we'll be presenting that at a later meeting once the contracts, the language is finalized with the attorneys. And that's all I have. On behalf, on behalf of the police department, I want to wish everybody a safe and festive holiday season.
Okay, any questions of Police Department?
Not a question, I guess. Well, chief, nice to see you here at first meeting, I think, isn't it?
Yes.
Hope to see you at more of them. On Broadway Street now by the bi-dock down there. Is there some place, some reason you can contact the State of Illinois, have them put these signs up, trucks leaving and entering highway on both sides of that underpass? We got three different places. A lot of trucks are going in and out down there. If they put a sign down the street like they do in other places, it might help stop an accident or something down there.
Where's the sign now? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
On Broadway, by the J, I call it the J, well, the C on rail, the underpass.
Yep.
The state has signs, they put trucks leaving and entering highway. I've seen those signs before at different places. We need one on north side, we need one on the south side, because we have trucks going, get it out both sides of that bi-dock.
You're talking about when they come off of LC over there from the railroad yard and then coming off the K farm.
Yeah, both sides down there.
I could, uh.
And the old lumberyard to come out of that place, too.
Yeah, we could reach out to IDOT and see what they could do.
Yeah. I don't know who you'd contact, by the State of Illinois Department of Traffic.
I'm sure somebody with IDOT.
Yeah. So if we get cold now, we might get it up by the end of the year, probably.
If we're lucky.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks. That's all. Good to have you here.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Moving on to the mayor's report. As we discussed at the work session last Monday evening, I would ask for council's concurrence to appoint Alderman Nate Albert as chairman of the events committee.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for the appointment of Nate Albert as chairman of the events committee. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Upstate.
Joe Kuvall?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And as we discussed last Monday night evening, last Monday night at the work session, also if anyone is considering being the co-chairman to the events committee, please reach out to me in the next couple of weeks, and we'll bring it back to the table probably in early February. Copy of my report is in your packet. One thing I was remiss in, two weeks ago, and I certainly want to recognize this evening, because I know that there were members from the city of Crestille on the state championship Joliet Catholic Academy Class 4A football team, which won their 15th state championship the day after Thanksgiving, just a couple of weeks ago. So we certainly, on behalf of all the residents of the city of Crestille, want to congratulate the members of the Joliet Catholic Academy football team. That's quite an accomplishment. It's most in the state's history at 15. And congratulations to them. I had the opportunity to speak at their ceremony that they had on Monday afternoon to represent the city of Crestille, and I am a proud 1975 graduate of Joliet Catholic. So again, congratulations to them. And also, I want to wish, because I know there were several members from the city of Crestille on the Lockport Township High School football team. And they recently, on Saturday after Thanksgiving, they won the Class 8A. That's the large schools. I believe that's their third state championship that they have received. And I know that several members of the team are from the city of Crestille. I also had the opportunity to speak at their ceremony that they had on Wednesday night, December Catholic graduate, but I redeemed myself when I told them that I married, my wife is a 1974 graduate of Lockport High School. So, then I got all the applause for that. So, congratulations to them, because they had an outstanding year. And where they came from two years ago, I think they did not have a, they were, they lost every game two years ago, so they made a tremendous turnaround and represented the area of Joliet and Crest Hill and Lockport very well with their state championships also. So congratulations to all of those athletes, and to the coaches and to the families. It's a lot of sacrifices that they have to make with their children, but, you know, they, everybody does their part, and the coaches make a lot of sacrifices also. So congratulations to everybody that was involved. It's quite an honor to have, actually, we had three teams, because Wilmington won, won Class 3A, I believe, 3A, I believe it was, 2A it was. So to have three state championships from the small radius of Will County that we have is pretty awesome. So congratulations to all of them. And again, I just certainly want to wish everybody on City Council, all of the residents, everybody a very blessed and Merry Christmas. Also, enjoy the time with your families. You know, it's a wonderful thing for everybody to get together. Be safe, be safe when you get together. The COVID is starting to go back up, so we have to be a little bit more cognizant of that and try to be a little bit more careful. But everybody have a very healthy and a very Happy New Year also. With that, I'll entertain any questions that anybody may have. And hearing none, we'll move on to our City Clerk's Report. Our City Clerk Christine Verche Hall, good evening, Chris.
Good evening, thank you. In your packet, you have a memo. Heard the discussion at the work session on December 13th for rocket testing. They're requesting additional temporary sign permits for their business located at 1701 North Larkin. It's going to be two separate motions, one for the 2021 year and one for the 2022 year. So the first motion before Council's approval is for two additional 10-day permits for 2021.
So move, second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
I abstain on that, as I said in the work session, how I feel about it.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
And Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. The second one is for 10 additional ones for the year of 2022. This will be in addition to the three permits that are allowed per ordinance 1812. Council, I need your approval.
So move, second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin. Questions or comments of the motion?
I just want to know, are we going to ask him to add the address and the name of the, of the rocket? Because his sign, it only says COVID testing, that's it. And the whole idea why he was asking all these things, because nobody will find him. And as I said in the meeting, I think we need to follow the rules when it comes to ordinance and signs. So I just want to make that clear, that I'm not against the numbers, the COVID, it's increasing, and I encourage people to wear their mask, but get tested as much possible, but many places are doing, even gas stations are requesting right now to, to do testing. I just, again, for you out there, don't think I'm voting against this because of the COVID. I'm voting because the way he came here, and he didn't even have a permit. So all, he had all these signs for 30 days or whatever, he didn't even have permits. So he break the rules, and we don't allow certain businesses to extend or to add promotions to hire people. They're suffering as well, and so that's the reason why I'm voting no against this.
Okay, may I make it clear, you are looking for their name?
No, because he came here, there's a work session, as saying he wants to add an extension for banner, because nobody can find him.
Right.
But he doesn't have the name on the building. He doesn't have the name on that big banner on Larkin either. He only have COVID testing, no name and no, no address.
Okay, I'll forward that to the building, the coenforcement.
That's just my, my...
Yeah.
There's a big sign on the corner now, on the southwest corner, there's a big sign out there. Must be 10 feet long, stuck in the ground over there, COVID testing.
But doesn't have a name or the...
But there's no, that's a no name.
She wants a name and address on it.
No, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm making a point why I was against this, so.
Okay, okay.
He did come in and pay his fees, because we were not going to put it on the agenda until he paid his fees, so he did come in...
Thursday.
And pay his fees. He did not address your issue with respect to putting the address on the sign, so just to let the council know.
That's fine. I just, I abstain, I mean, and I stand by how I feel.
And I agree with you, Claudia, not deviating too far away from the ordinance, but with, with these types of businesses, I feel like it is kind of a temporary thing. We just got to get through this, and hopefully, like he said, maybe in the next six months, he won't even need to have that location there. Keep our fingers crossed.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
No.
Tina Oberlin? Motion carries, thank you.
Mayor, can I just mention one thing about the Clerk's Office? I forgot to thank them. I just want to thank Chris and Jan and Lori and Karen. They've been awesome, and especially, we're going to miss, I tell you, the city's going to really miss Jan. They are, she is unbelievable, and she retiring December, January 10th?
Seven.
Or 7th, Karen will start on the 10th. But thank you, Chris, and thank you to the Clerk's Office for all your help as well.
Thank you. On behalf of the City Clerk's Office, we wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a safe New Year. And the Clerk's Office would like to thank you, Steve, for all your help that you've done for us, and welcome aboard, Jim. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our City Treasurer's Report. Our Treasurer Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from November 22nd, 2021 through December 5th of 2021 in the amount of $238,689.14. I seek a motion for approval on a list of bills which in that same timeframe totaled
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list, list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Mark, Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
And Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I thank you all, and I'll turn this over to Lisa Benavides for the next agenda item.
As presented at the previous press conference, the non-working personnel also retribution and amended prior legislation of number 816, and some cases to clarify the status of unclaimed funds under the city's property tax rebate program. Any questions? If anybody has any additional questions, we'll ask questions. We're not enough.
Any questions of Finance Director in regards to the proposed resolution? Okay, motion would be in order?
So move, second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution amending prior resolutions numbers 860 and number 1053 to clarify the status of unclaimed funds under the city's property tax rebate program. Any final questions or comments?
I do. Lisa, do you mind for the residents watching at home, could you just briefly state what the changes are to this? Because it affects, you know, all residents.
Sure, absolutely. So what this resolution is going to do is any checks that are issued that are not cashed within six months, those funds will then revert back to the city instead of having those be unclaimed property and sent onto the state. And it'll also ensure that anybody who's applying for rebate is current in their utility bill, so they have to make sure that they're paid up to date. But I also wanted to state that if somebody is issued a check and they don't cash it within the six months and they find it nine months or a year later, the city will still honor that. The city will still, will still cash that check for them. It's just trying to tighten it up so that when the checks are sent out, that people are cashing on time line.
You would say we'd reissue a check?
We would reissue it at that point, because after six months, it would be considered void. But again, it's, it's not a penalty, it's just trying to make sure that we don't have a bunch of money that's sitting there unclaimed.
And instead of having to go to the state to get this money that was issued, they would get, the money would be back here then.
That's correct.
That's why you can do that, because if it goes to the state, it's a whole other process.
That's correct.
Yeah, so this will streamline.
And it's much more cumbersome for somebody that if it then is sent to the state, then they have to go through a bunch of hoops to try to get it back, so.
Okay, roll call, please, Chris.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries, Resolution 1128. Thank you.
And can I just say, what a pleasure it's been to work with all of you. I've been here now for four months, and with Steve, and now with Jim, and all Council. I've just really enjoyed being here and working with all of you, so thank you for welcoming me to the Crest Hill family.
Feeling beautiful, Lisa.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'd like to thank Mayor and Council for all their help and supporting our office, and I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year.
Okay, any questions of Treasurer? Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, and good night.
Moving on, unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda, anyone? Moving on to new business, we have Plan Commission recommendation. It is case RZ-21-5-12-1. The applicant is the city of Crest Hill, and this is for a rezoning of the state-built property, the southwest corner of Division and Weber, from M1 to B1. With that, I will turn it over to Maura Rigoni for opening comments in regards to this request. Maura?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in August of this past year, that the city had made an application and rezoned a property, the state-built property at the corner of Weber and Division. With that, after receiving new information and conversations, that the legal description that was at that time did not include the entire 200 acres, but just then the 160 acres. So this is just an additional, this was always intended, the 200 acres. This is kind of like a little bit of a cleanup, but ensuring that we have consistency with the entire 200 acres, that in conversations, that has always been kind of this discussion of what, what the state will do and so forth. Clarification that this is, there are no development plans, just like there was in the 160 acres prior. There's no development plans at this time, no applications at this time. This is just simply a rezoning from the M1 district to the B1 district, and then as future plans come in, look for consistency with comprehensive plan and so forth. So this is just to keep that 200 acres consistent with the 160 that was prior.
So this is the 40 acres basically to the east of the property?
Correct, correct. The 160 was a defined parcel, and then there was this additional 40 that was actually half, it's not a complete one lot, that it was a legal description that was just defining a certain portion. So this now balances out to things like 198 and some change. There, yep. And, yeah, in your packet, there should be.
It's inadvertently left off. Stateville want to give it to us inadvertently left off that pin number, so we just have to clean it up.
Okay, any questions of Maura in regards to the request?
I have a question. Maura, could you, for the citizens at home, explain the difference between the zoning of B1 to M1?
Sure, I most certainly can. M1 is your manufacturing district. You have classifications of M1 and M2, and those are those businesses that generally have more industrial type use, more of our, not as heavy as our M2, but more of our, just your typical industrial general. Our B1, that's our business classification. We have a range between B1 and B3. These are your typical businesses that you see up and down Plainfield Road as well as Weber Road. So it really, there's, B1 is your most restrictive commercial that in there, in your zoning classifications, ranging from B1 to B3. Just looking at the B1, but understanding that as future development comes, we may look to kind of change that to fit, to fit more of the commercial needs at that time.
Thank you. And the B1 would be more marketable for, for development on that property?
It's more in line, having any zoning classification of B business is more in line with your comprehensive plan, as your comprehensive plan identifies that area as, as commercial along that, majority of this 200 acres is identifying your account plan as commercial.
Correct. Okay, anybody else, questions for Maura? With that, I would ask if anyone would like to speak for or against case RZ-21-5-12-1. The applicant is the city of Crest Hill. The owner of the property is, is the state of Illinois, and this is for a rezoning from M1 to B1. Please approach the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Second request, if anyone would like to speak for or against case RZ-21-5-12-1, the request of the city of Crest Hill to the state of Illinois for the rezoning of the property at 20233 West Division Street from M1 to B1. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. And a third request, if anyone would like to speak for or against case RZ-21-5-12-1, the request of the city of Crest Hill to the state of Illinois for the rezoning of the property at 20233 West Division Street from M1 to B1. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. With there being no further questions from City Council, you have before you an ordinance establishing a map amendment to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the application of city of Crest Hill to rezone certain state-built property. Motion would be in order.
So move, second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the request. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ray, can I ask Mike this question? Do we have to have a letter from the state that tells us it's okay that we're rezoning that property again?
We've published notice.
Yeah, do they have to tell us we have, we could do that without their okay?
No, we've, we petitioned, they've had all the notice, we've had public hearings, nobody appeared on it, it's done.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
And we have been in contact with a gentleman named Stephen Booth from the state. He has worked with us hand in hand from the, since the rezoning that started, and we've had great communications with this Stephen Booth, Morris had great communications. They're all on board, we are good.
Because I know you can't change property, only the owner can change his property from what's zoning. He could ask for that. That's why I wondered, we never got a notice.
They did not, they did not contest it.
Okay.
But our, but our ordinance does allow the city to petition. I mean, I could petition to rezone your property. You could come and object, but the city does have built into its ordinance the ability to be the person that initiates a rezoning. That's what we did in this case. We followed the ordinance and followed the rules, and they were provided all the notices, and, you know, they have not objected, and...
No, I most recently, prior to the Plan Commission meeting, just reached out to them to, to Stephen Booth, the contact, just to make sure that he, that they did receive Once this date was set, I reached out to him last week as well via email, identifying the date and time of this meeting, and just so they ensured and understood that this was the recommendation moving forward from the Plan Commission, this was for consideration and action at tonight's meeting.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, no, they've been involved.
I think we're on very solid ground legally.
Okay, roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 1888, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Maura. Anybody else for new business? Committee liaison reports, anyone? City Council comments, these are positive City Council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Ward 4 tonight, Alderman Kowal.
Just wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday season, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Mayor, I'd also just like to congratulate the winners of the contest again, but I'd also really like to thank the Public Works Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Lions Club for another successful parade around town. Whether it was a little cool for the kids and parents to hang out, but there was a lot of happy kids, like Mark said, when the parade went through. So thanks to everybody involved with that.
Ward 3, Alderman Sapiti?
Yeah, I want to also thank everybody that was involved for the Christmas parade recently. It was well received by the residents, and it was nice to see Santa out. I also want to extend my wishes for everybody to have a safe and merry Christmas and a healthy and happy new year. Thank you.
Alderperson Oberlin?
Yes, I would love to wish everyone a very merry Christmas and a happy new year. Joyeux Noel, Feliz Navidad, whatever you celebrate, celebrate it safely and happily with your family and friends, and do remember what the season is truly about.
Ward 2, Alderwoman Gazal?
Since I missed last meeting, I want to thank all the residents that went out of their way to donate so much food to the food pantry, I mean, the food pantry, to bring the truck to be able to pick up the food. I'm really thankful for your help, for your generosity to help others, and I want to wish all the staff, the residents, City Council, a very blessed Christmas. Let's take a moment and think about all the blessings that we have. We are very blessed in this country. And again, I'm going to miss you a lot, Steve. Thank you for everything that you've done for us. And Jim, welcome, we look forward to work with you.
Alderman Jefferson?
I'd just like to say, wish everyone a very happy and safe prosperous holiday season. Been, since May the 3rd, since I've been here, it's been an experience, but it's one that I will treasure for a lifetime. Welcome, Jim. Hate to lose you, Steve, you know, but Jim is here now, so. I think, I think we'll be in good hands. It is his turn to lead us in the direction that you've paved for us. I want to thank all of my council brothers and sisters for their support in being here to help move this city forward, and I look forward to continuing. And I want to thank all our Public Works, Public Works, Police Department, City Engineer, and Financial Director, and Human Resources Director, because, you know, without you guys doing the work you do, we would, you know, we would be in a real hot mess up here. But thank you, and happy holidays to everyone.
Ward 1, Alderman Verche.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year, a happy merry Christmas, and to whatever denomination you celebrate, have a happy one and a safe one. And while we're on this here, I'd like to thank the people who own the Sunda dump now down there. If you drive by down there, he did put a nice gate in over there, it's electric gate with aluminum tubing, gates electrically open and close. He's got an American flag flying up there, now he's going to put flowers around the bottom of that pole. I'd like to congratulate them, they really did a nice job looking down there, looks like something totally new. That's all I have.
Alderman Dyke?
I don't know what else I could add that hasn't been said, but I would like to...
Talk about Easter.
Wish everyone a very merry and blessed Christmas. Let's remember what the real reason of the season is, it's all taken, it's a season of giving, so hopefully we can give and help those who are less fortunate than us, and a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year to everybody. Thank you.
Okay, public comment, anyone like to address City Council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our management consultant, Steve, is there a need for an executive session?
There is not.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.[1734.33]